Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Portsmouth City Council Meeting for Monday, May 16, 2011, here in the Eileen Dondaro Foley City Council Chambers. I'd like to call the meeting to order, welcome you all who are present in the gallery at this time, as well as those watching at home and listening on the net, and call the meeting to order. I'd like to ask the city clerk to call the roll.
Mayor Novlin Clayburg?
Here.
Councilor Lister?
Here.
Councilor Hetchmonic?
Here.
Councilor Spear?
Here.
Councilor Dwyer?
Councilor Covielo?
Here.
Councilor Kennedy?
Here.
Councilor Smith?
Here.
And I'll just note that it is our understanding that Councilor Dwyer will be dialing in at approximately 8:00, and she'll call the city manager, and then we'll put her on at that time, so we'll make note of that at that time. This time, I would like to ask the Assistant Mayor Nancy Novlin-Clayberg to lead us in the invocation, in particular, in honor of her long friend and colleague Ray Bowles, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
If we could all remember our friend and colleague Ray Bowles, who was a former city councilor, school board member, and state representative. For those of us that knew him, he was an incredible man, very smart, had a passion for people, and for Portsmouth, and for the state of New Hampshire. Bob Lister and I went to visit him on Saturday morning at Edgewood. Unfortunately, we got there too late, but we got an opportunity to talk to his daughter, Pamela, for a while, and it was wonderful to reminisce about all the great things that Ray did for our community. She informed us that donations could be made in his memory to the Portsmouth Public Library. So if anybody wants to do that, Ray was very involved in that project, and I'm sure that would make him very happy. So, thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Please join me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time, it is my great pleasure to honor further public service. Thinking of someone like Ray Bowles, it's an easy transition to talk about the honoree this evening, and that is our deputy fire chief, Steve Griswold. And Steve started with the Portsmouth Fire Department in 1978. By my count, that's 34 years with us. He became a lieutenant in 1983, a captain in 1989, and a deputy chief in 2003, a deputy chief in particular for fire prevention and administration, and he has spent his entire career here, serving the citizens of Portsmouth. The fire prevention efforts, and I can recall when he took that position in 2003, makes a big deal in our community, and he certainly embodies the spirit of Portsmouth firefighters and public service in general. I'd like to ask him to come forward. I see that his family is with him as well, and we've got a gift for you, and then we're going to ask the chief to speak, but we have a mayor's award as well, and we certainly invite you to say a few words.
Thank you. I really appreciate this, it's an honor. I've really enjoyed working and serving the citizens for the last 33 years. When I came to Portsmouth in 1978, the city was a lot different then than it is now. The Market Square sidewalks were being laid, the bricks had not been completed yet on any of them. State Street was full of interesting places to visit in the evening. Portsmouth has changed dramatically. It's been a great experience working here. I've always felt that the citizens really appreciated the services that we provide. I also have to say that I have to thank my wife, Barbara, and my son John, daughter Laura. It's a difficult life sometimes for them. There were a lot of events that we missed, and a lot of good things that I would have enjoyed participating in, but I was working or on call or at an emergency, so they stuck by me, and I appreciate that. It's been a, you know, can't believe when things get here as quickly as they do. Last year or two, I've been looking ahead, and all of a sudden, it's like, wow, 33 years has gone by like that. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Let me come down and give you this. And this is also something you can take with you, now that you may have a little bit more time on your hands, so we hope you will enjoy it. And thanks very much on behalf of the city. Can I ask the chief to come up after I go back up and say a word or two as well?
Thank you very much.
And thank you to your family as well.
I appreciate that.
All right. Thank you.
Come back.
Oh, there he is. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor, city councilors. Thanks for taking the time to recognize Steve. I just wanted to say that 11 years ago, actually probably more than that, 12 years ago when I came here, Steve Griswold actually sat on the selection committee for deputy chief when I got the job, so you can blame him. He was a very welcoming force when I got the job. He wanted to make sure that I knew everything that he knew, which isn't possible. Just when a new person comes in from the outside in a department that big, you need somebody on your side, and Steve Griswold was there for me. He really didn't get excited about anything, whether it was something to do with the council, something to do with the budget, something to do with an emergency situation, a fire, he was always very steady. I recall one situation where we had a fire reported in one of the rather large places along the riverfront, and I came rushing out of my office, and there was a hand in the hallway saying, "You don't want to rush to this one. Take your time, you know, take a good look at it, and walk in," because he knew the occupancy much better than I did. Just that type of leadership, that type of mentoring attitude. When I became the chief, Steve was very glad that I got the job and he didn't, after watching everything we were going through, but as part of the administrative team, he was always there, as far as his work with fire prevention administration and being on a technical advisory committee. The last big name we had in fire prevention was George Pierce, and there were big shoes to fill. And whenever you send somebody out in the public dealing with code enforcement and plans review, the way they conduct themselves and their attitude really speaks volume for the department. And Steve was the type of person that even when he was telling them they had to do $20,000 in upgrades to their alarm system, he did it in a friendly manner, and I received all kinds of compliments from the business community on Steve Griswold's work out there in the field. You know, fire prevention is one of the hardest things to quantify, because I cannot tell you how many lives get saved, I cannot tell you how many injuries are prevented by his work, but since 2003, our fire prevention office has run along really exemplary with him at the helm, and we're going to miss him. I'm not going to miss him so much, because I'm his neighbor, so he won't be able to escape me, but we're going to miss his work, we'll miss him, and we'll miss his demeanor around the fire station. Additionally, on May 27th, his last full day with us, at 2:00 in the afternoon, we'll have a gathering for him at Station One, for anybody who wants to swing by and say goodbye. So, thank you again for recognizing him, and thanks to Steve Griswold for all his work.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Steve, and family. Steve, we would love it if you and your family and everyone wished to stay, and you certainly can, but please do not feel self-conscious about leaving if you wish to as well. Okay? And that is in no way intended to hasten your departure. Okay, all right. We now move on to the next portion of our agenda, item six, which is public comment session. We have two speakers this evening. The rules are that you may speak for three minutes on the subject of your choice, and we ask that you identify yourself and your name and address, and with that, I will begin the public comment session, noting that at 2 minutes and 30 seconds, you'll see a sign held up by our city attorney. That will indicate that you have 30 seconds remaining, and when you see the "thank you" sign, you will know that your 30, three minutes is up. We welcome you, and we would like to hear from you, so here we go. Our first speaker this evening is Mary Lou McKelwain, regarding communication.
Thank you. Mary Lou McKelwain, 259 South Street. And first of all, I want to say I'm really dissatisfied with the two recent votes by the city council, majority of the city council, for both the youth recreation center and parking on Sunday. Especially the parking on Sunday, at least 400 people signed a petition, and more than 50 people came to city council meetings to speak in opposition to the Sunday parking and parking meters at the lot. And I heard from a business owner that the tags were ready to go the day after the vote, so it feels like it was a done deal. But I'd like to talk about communication, because it's intimidating for a lot of people to come up to this spot and speak to city council. At public comment session, there's no dialogue, so we have comments to put before you, and there's no way of getting feedback, and that's true of public hearings also. So I feel that there should be some way, I mean, it's very hard to call nine city councilors with a concern. I feel that each of you should have an email that's specific to City Hall address, because I don't say the same thing to each person that I'm calling, but I would like to have an email address, and I'd like a response from that email, the comments. On the city's website, it does say that any reports or communications must be submitted by noon the Wednesday before the meeting, however, the agenda doesn't come out until Thursday. So if anybody has a comment about tonight's meeting, it was too late to communicate with that. I just think there needs to be a better way for the city council to be communicating with the people who take a lot of time writing letters to the editor, writing letters to you, or coming to public hearings, and I would appreciate email-specific. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker this evening is Doug Bates, regarding alcohol on city property.
Doug Bates, representing Great Portsmouth Chamber of Commerce, and as an aside, I agree with this lady very much. I'm here to talk, read a letter from the Portsmouth Chamber of Commerce. It's directed to Mayor Frainy and the city councilors. "It's my pleasure to support John Tinios of Popovers, who is a chamber member seeking to use city-owned property in front of popovers for outdoor seating with alcohol service. The chamber urges you to grant this request. Portsmouth is a vibrant city which attracts many visitors. On a warm day, our visitors love nothing better than to be outdoors, and having lunch or having dinner." People love to be with people. Expanding outdoor seating will allow them additional venues to enjoy. The visual impact alone is wonderful, and it's a way to market our city at no cost. Everybody marvels when you look down Congress Street and sees all the people, it's always a comment, "There's so many people here." This just will sort of sweeten the pot. The decks have been a huge success. They're well-managed and contribute to the ambience that is Portsmouth. I think adding outdoor seating downtown can only add to that ambience, and I applaud Mr. Tinios and others who are interested in adding to the experience of Portsmouth." And I would like to give the council these letters.
Thank you. Please bring those up, and we'll submit them to the city clerk and put them in the record. Thank you. Our next speaker this evening, well, I'm sorry, that is the end of public comment. So we now move on to public hearing. It is an ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 4, Section 10.420, district location and boundaries rezoning of land at 54 Rogers Street from municipal M to mixed residence and office, and zoning map referenced in Chapter 10. Do we have any presentation before us this evening?
No, Your Honor, this is pretty much a result of the action you took a few weeks back relative to the disposal of a portion of land as part of a review of a property line issue, and since it was municipal, it now needs to be converted to appropriate zone.
Okay, this is before you, it's properly before you and in your package, and it's been before us a number of times now, so we have a sense as to what it is. With that, I'm going to open the public hearing for individuals who would like to speak for, against, or simply to this proposition. You may speak as long as you wish, and I'll open the public hearing, and if anyone cares to rise, I would only ask that you come forward and state your name and address for the record, and say what you wish to say about this. So with that, I'll open the public hearing. Does anyone care to speak to the 54 Rogers Street zoning item? Seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing. We move on to approval of grants and donations. Item A is acceptance for grant for African burying ground fundraising costs, $4,000. This is from Centrix Bank, and does anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Item nine, consideration of resolutions and ordinances. A is first reading of resolution authorizing the borrowing in anticipation of revenue and taxes not to exceed $16 million. We would be seeking a motion to pass first reading and hold a public hearing and adoption of this resolution at the June 6, 2011 city council meeting.
Your Honor, I just want to clarify, there was a typographical error in the one portion of the comments that I made. It is FY '12, July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. Just want to make sure people are aware of that. It is for that particular fiscal year, it's the next fiscal year.
Okay, please note that for the record. Also note that borrowing resolutions only require two readings, and would be required to be adopted by a two-third vote of the city council. So does anyone care to move to pass first reading and hold a public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Councilor Smith, and Assistant Mayor, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. We move on to item three, I'm sorry, item C. B. Second reading of proposed ordinance amending Chapter 10, Article 4, Section 10.420, district location and boundaries rezoning of land at 54 Rogers Street from municipal M to mixed residence office. This is what was before us in the public hearing. We'd need a motion to move to pass second reading and schedule a third and final reading of the proposed ordinance as presented at the June 6, 2011 council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
We have motion, we have second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Now move on to the consent agenda. We have two items. The first, well, a motion would be in order to adopt the consent agenda. Item A is acceptance of donation to the Coalition Legal Fund from the town of Center Harbor in the amount of $500. And the item B is a letter from Brianna Marshall, Big Brothers and Sisters, requesting permission to close Chestnut Street on Saturday, August 20, 2011, from 3:30 PM to 4:30 PM to hold the second annual stiletto race.
Move to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Thank you. Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Item 11, presentation and consideration of written communications and petitions. Item A is a letter from Rachel McCoy, Kachiko Valley Humane Society, requesting permission to use Pierce Island on October 2, 2011, for the 14th Annual Dog Walk and Vendor Fair, entitled "Parade Your Pooch." Typically, this sort of thing is sent to both the REC Board and perhaps Pierce Island for report back. Does anyone care to speak to it? John?
Your Honor, I feel it's very important to go to the Pierce Island Committee and also the REC Board. You can see there's potential 400 to 500 people involved in this, and I just think before any approvals are given by the city council, that the Pierce Island Committee, who's done a lot of work out on Pierce Island, should be aware of this, and should be able to weigh in on this, as well as the Recreation Board, just to make sure there's nothing that conflicts with this.
Anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Okay, well, thank you.
Ball's report's back.
Thank you, acceptable second, and thank you, Councilor Smith and Councilor Kennedy. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Move on to a letter from Cindy Brown, Girls on the Run, requesting permission to hold a 5K road race on Saturday, June 18, 2011, at the Pease International Trade Port. Does anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It's moved to the city manager with power? Is that your intent?
Yes.
Okay, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Item C, a letter from Attorney Robert Shains, Shains from Natchitochan, PA, requesting the city authorize the city manager to execute a release deed, discontinuing the easement for the property located at 80 Woodlawn Circle.
Move to the planning board for a report back?
Thank you, Councilor Smith, thank you, Councilor Kennedy. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Item D, a letter from Michael Singleton, Share Our Strength, requesting permission to seek donations on the streets of Portsmouth and at the entrance of businesses on Saturday, May 21st, or Saturday, May 28, 2011.
Move to the city manager with power?
Second.
We have a second. Discussion, inquiry. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Item E, a letter from John Tinios, owner of Popovers on the Square, requesting use of city-owned property for outdoor seating with alcohol service. Does anyone care to make a motion?
So moved. Move to the city manager?
Okay, we've moved it to the city manager, do we have, I'm sorry.
And any other necessary?
Yeah, I would like to, because this would have to go to the Public Trees and Greenery Committee, because it's important.
Okay, so you.
And any other necessary approvals.
Okay, and thank you, Councilor Smith, and is it included within the ambit of that, that you would believe that to be trees and public greenery?
Trees, yes.
Okay, all right. So do we have a second?
As well as the board for looking at alcohol-related issues in the city.
Yes.
Okay, so we have that motion before us, we have a second discussion.
Can I just ask a question?
Sure.
Will it come back to the city council for a final decision, or?
No, this would be it, unless you wanted to come back, it would report back from the Trees and Greenery Committee, that's up to you. I think this would be, again, another pilot program. It's, again, we're trying to figure out what best works for us in that area, in all areas, and see what actually works on the sidewalk to allow a combination of restaurants to be able to utilize that space in a way that creates a good environment, as well as allowing four pedestrians to pass by. So the first year's going to, we're going to learn some things that we're going to try to implement throughout as we go forward. We'll probably, you know, have some areas where we'll have to change, that's not unusual. So this would be going forward for this season. We would, because of the approvals needed from the Trees and Greenery Committee, Mr. Tinios is requesting, and I agree, that we should probably prorate the license, probably, you know, so that we would prorate it as the number of months available. So what you have in front of you is what we would proceed with, other than the Trees and Greenery Committee.
Questions for all concerned and discussion. Councilor Kennedy, you were first.
I'm having a hard time with taking out the two trees, I'll be honest with you. So I would like to either, I guess I would like to amend the motion, that it does report back to the city council after the Trees and Greenery, because I like the trees down there, I think they have a nice look. I would hate to remove trees, which I think is a real public benefit, for the benefit of alcohol. And I'm kind of debating that, so I really feel that...
Well, actually, you've made a motion to amend, so let's get a second.
Second.
All right, we got a second. The motion to amend is that for there to be a report back from Trees and Greenery, yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so that's the second. So we have a motion, she's actually speaking and has spoken. If you care to continue, please do, if not, we'll have additional discussion on the topic.
No, I just, I really believe that I would hate to give one up for another, and I really think we have to weigh out the look of the downtown, and also the benefit of trees in our community. And so I really think we need to have it report back.
City manager offers a point of information before we go forward with additional.
Yeah, I just would like to get a feel for the council, other than the Trees and Greenery issue, maybe from a consensus point, so that we don't go through the report back, and then there are other issues. I'd like to try to get anything else out on the table. If it's just Trees and Greenery, then we'll bring it back, and, you know.
Well, let's start, so on this side, I saw Council Covielo, yes?
Do you want to have a vote on the amendment first?
I'm going to say that it is of a general nature, and such that we can just have the discussion. Let's just try and have the discussion, unless people are going to want to offer additional amendments and turn this into...
Well, once it's, all I'm looking for, Your Honor, is just a feel for not only myself and the staff, but also for Mr. Tinios, to get an idea what, you know, to expect. If we go through the whole process of going through Trees and Greenery, and he hypothetically does something that just, you know, alleviates any problems, then are there going to be other issues that show up on June 6? That's all I'm looking for.
Okay, the city manager has expressed his position. Do you have a concern about speech with respect to her amendment as it stands presently, Council Covielo? Or do you want to talk, do you want to speak now?
I'll title this "My Thoughts on the Proposed Amendment."
That's fine.
I just, a couple of things. One is that I wish there was availability for public seating outside the area somewhere, either a bench or another table between the trees, possibly. These are just thoughts, and I know this is a pilot program, so I wouldn't suggest changing it this year, but I don't know structuring it $10,000 for a summer, regardless of size, and I'm not suggesting you are, I just, I don't know if...
No.
If you're doing $10,000 for 10 seats at one place, and $10,000 for 44 seats at another.
This, well, this is similar to the size of the Pechet. What we are looking at, we were, hopefully, there will be two pilots, and that'll be it, because what we'd like to do is look at per table type of, per square footage. We don't want to get into, you know, a flat fee.
Right, that was my, that's my request.
That's something, we had intended to try to do pilots and figure out what would be best work, and we're internally talking about that, we're checking with other communities, and probably square footage and tables, we're looking at both those areas. So that's something we're going to look at. This year... This year, I think we're just trying to feel our way through this. And with regards to the benches, what we have, counselor, is we have a challenge that we have to make sure we have a good flow of traffic for pedestrians. So at this point, we'll, we'll see how that, all that flow goes, you know?
Thank you, Council Covielo. I'm gonna go over to this side and start with Council Spear and work back up towards the Assistant Mayor. Council Spear.
My first question, on the, one of the bulleted items from Pop Over's is the modifications to the bakery display window. And would that require HTC approval?
Yes.
Okay. And then, secondly, I'll just make a comment, that I wasn't thinking of other, I guess I was kind of thinking of other public seating, the way Council Covielo was, but looking at the diagram that was provided, right now, it is a pretty public space, even though mostly it's Pop Over's patrons who use those tables. A lot of people also legally patch their bike and go sit down. So I think the proposed scheme, I have some concerns about the proposed scheme, but I like that if, as the city manager emphasized, this is a pilot program. And I think I'd rather approve it and then improve it than not approve it and say we didn't try. So with that in mind, I'll be supporting the motions.
Any further discussion on this matter? Council Lister.
My, my concern would be protecting the trees, I'd like to see us not do anything to the trees. And also, to follow up with Council Spear, the, and maybe the city manager, the length of time for a pilot project is, we're talking about what?
Would be this season.
This season.
Yeah, and then so next summer, come 2012, it was, would be our hope to have a, a standard policy document that the city council would have approved, that would outline, you know, cost per seat and talk about certain, like we did with the vendors on the sidewalks, to do certain, there would have to be certain amount of width available for pedestrians to pass through. We would set up a whole set of parameters, we'd come back to the city council probably sometime next year, and we'd create a policy like you've done in the past. And, and we've done, we have multiple policies, and one of them would be this. And we try, and, and, you know, so that we at least follow a policy, so for example, if somebody does not meet the criteria, we can then say, well, you don't meet the criteria, rather than having everyone come back to the city council individually, because there'll be those, quite frankly, they'll come in that will want to have this type of seating that won't have the capacity to have pedestrians pass by. We have to make sure those that are non-ambulatory are able to get by, you know, if they're in a wheelchair and the like. So we need to make sure that, you know, that we do not impede pedestrian traffic. The location of Pop Over's is unique, it has a nice wide sidewalk, and we can, and the same thing with the Pechet location. It has, it has had outside seating, but we will expand slightly onto city properties. So these will give us an opportunity to see how these things work.
Thank you. I'd just like to make sure that we have an opportunity to talk about this at some other point.
What I intend to do is, at the end of the season, we will evaluate what went well and what didn't go well. We'll talk to the property owners, and we'll talk to, probably, I'm sure we'll hear from citizens, if it's not going well, we'll hear if it's going well. And what I'd like to do is draft a policy for the city council that you can review, discuss, and then act on. And then I, then the city staff will have specific direction going into the 2012 summer season.
Thank you.
Assistant Mayor.
I just have a question, I guess, for John. It looks like the trees are spaced, you know, every 10, 12, 20 feet, whatever, is, that's what it looks like from this picture. Is that a, like a strategy that we use in placing the trees?
Well, that whole area, that you'll find within the confines of what they have proposed, there are two trees that would take up some space. One of the things that, you know, they, obviously, the owner of Pop Over's has certain costs associated with doing this pilot program, and certainly has to be, you know, cognizant of the changes they're making in the costs associated with it. So it'd seem reasonable that they want to maximize the amount of space that they have available, and we wanted to make sure there was appropriate public pedestrian access. So I think what we need to do is, we'll talk to the Trees and Greenery Committee, and we'll talk to the owner of Pop Over's as part of that discussion, and see, you know, what, what can be done to, to try to solve that issue that people are concerned with. But I, you know, again, we have to keep in mind that there's a financial investment that they're making as well for this policy, for this, this proposal, and it might end up being only one year, and they're making this commitment. So I think that needs to be recognized as well. So that's why I wanted to try to find out if there was anything other than the trees, which I think are important, but, so that if, if the tree issue is resolved, then if we come back on the 6th, that he can move forward to try to get part of the season in.
Okay.
Assistant Mayor.
Because I'm just wondering, we do have the stipulation in the, in the rules that you have to have some kind of a boundary, correct? You have to have some kind of, like, decorative fence or?
Well, it, really, if you look at the proposal, you'll see that within our comments, we show, we want to try to keep it as non-intrusive as possible, the, the type of barrier. We, we want to make sure, we don't want to have what was at Pechet. That was, that was something that we started with, again, that's something we learned from. We, we looked at other communities throughout the United States. If you see the pictures here, there, there's nice-looking rails that can be removable. So that's kind of where we're going with this thing, to try to not, you know, we want, we don't want to draw a lot of attention to the, to the so-called fence, you know? It, it really would be, if you can see, it's almost like a wrought iron type of fence.
I guess when I'm.
You have other people?
Yep, I'm sorry, Assistant Mayor.
I'm just wondering if you could move the two trees to fit in with the.
Well, maybe what you ought, that, if you want to do that tonight, we can, and, or we can let the council know when the Trees and Greenery Committee's meeting, because I don't want to try to preempt what their review would be.
Proceedurally speaking, I mean, I think if councillors have an interest in the trees, it might make sense to go to that meeting. I mean, for the councils to decide where to move trees by motion practice might not be the most efficient use of our time, and clearly, it's gonna be an issue and a point of discussion for many people, so we'll just make sure we keep that meeting on radar. Further discussion, councillors. I'm sorry, Council Kennedy.
I had a question. Council Spears is pretty accurate, I see people just stop and take a little break there and sit for a second and then move on. The question I have is, will they be allowed to stop and take a break?
Well, again, that's going to be up to the restaurant owner. The, the fact remains is that what we have now with the tables and chairs is people have become accustomed to those being public places, and that's accommodation that, that we have made within the license, so that businesses know that you don't have to be a patron of Pop Over's to sit at that table. Again, this is a major change, this is something we, you know, it's going to be, in most cities, once you get into this type of situation, it will be customers of the restaurant. So I, I understand your concern, and I've heard that, but that's why we're trying this. If there's, if there's a lot of feedback that say people want to go back and have it the way it was, then that's something we're gonna have to look at.
If councillors also, I mean, we, the owner is here, if you want to suspend the rules and further inquire, we can certainly.
But you're, yeah, your honor, I mean, that'd be great, but, I mean, for tonight, I mean, he certainly can speak to that, I don't want to put him on the spot, but if, if that's what the council wants to do.
Yeah, I mean, I.
I guess, I just want to say that I like an open city, and I don't want to have a Newbury Street where we have all these little shut-in areas along the street, like they do in Boston. I like the fact that it's open, people can go over and have coffee over at quite a few of the places and just sit down, I mean, in Marcus Square. And I'm having, now that I'm thinking more about it, first I just had an issue with the trees, but now I'm thinking more about it is, is we, now we have another exclusive spot in our city, on city property, that is not public. And, you know, I guess I am questioning it.
Further discussion. Council Smith.
Thank you. I'm gonna be supporting the motion, especially the main motion of approving this. I think it's, it makes us a very forward-thinking city. I think it brings a new ambiance to the downtown, as, and, you know, and it really kind of moves us forward. I just spent this past weekend down in Hoboken, New Jersey, and in New York City, and you see where these are very popular, they work very well, and a lot of people were still sitting on the regular benches that were out there enjoying their lunches and, and coffee, mostly coffee, because it was rainy down there, but it was, people, it was really nice to be able to see that everything was being used down in that area. And I think this, having this go forward is, is again, making us to be a very forward-thinking city.
Okay, so we have, we still have, well, additional discussion.
Call of questions?
Okay, so let's go with the amendment first, and we're gonna go with Council Kennedy's amendment, and we'll have roll call. All in favor, and we'll do a roll call, please?
What's the amendment?
The amendment was to have this sent with a report back from Trees and Greenery.
Assistant Mayor Novlin Clayburg?
Yes.
Council Lister?
Yes.
Council Hegmonic?
Yes.
Council Spear?
Yes.
Council Covielo?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Farini?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Now we go to the motion in chief, and I would ask, as a matter of housekeeping, I think Council Smith made the motion, do you, does anyone recall who seconded it? Does anyone recall who they were for second? Okay, Council Covielo thinks it may have been him, so just for the record, we'll note that. Just, any further discussion, although we've kept a broad discussion, really speaking to both?
What is the motion?
The main motion.
It's the main motion. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Sure. Assistant Mayor Novlin Clayburg?
Yes.
Council Lister?
Yes.
Council Hegmonic?
Yes.
Council Spear?
Yes.
Council Covielo?
Yes.
Council Kennedy?
Yes.
Council Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Farini?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Thank you. We now move on to item F, which is a report from the Association of Portsmouth Taxpayers regarding the police department budget, and it has been submitted. Does anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
So moved to accept and place on file.
What's the intent of your motion?
To accept and place on file.
Okay, we have a motion to accept and place on file, do we have a second?
Second.
Discussion. Yeah, Council Covielo.
I just would assume that it, a copy's been sent to the Police Commission.
I will send one if I have.
Note that for the record, and we'll make sure that it goes.
Thank you.
Council Spear.
I'll just say that, I mean, there's no actionable items here, but I'll just say it was very interesting, and I thank them for their hard work.
Further discussion.
I, what, may I?
Assistant Mayor Novlin Clayburg?
I would just like to agree with Council Spear, it's obvious that a lot of time and attention and research went into this, and I think it's, I thank them for sharing that information with the city council.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, unanimous. We move on to the city managers' items which require action under other items, other areas of the agenda, we have done that. We now move to his items which require action. John, item one.
Thank you, your honor. The first item is request to dispose of surplus vehicles, we do this every year. The city currently has 12 surplus vehicles and one lawnmower for disposal, we have attached a copy of a list. In the past, we've sold of surplus vehicles through sealed bid process to the highest bidder. According to the city ordinance, section 1.505, property valued at more than $500 has to receive approval from the city council prior to bidding. So what we would do is, we would ask that we do, we allow it to be, to sell these excess vehicles and mower by sealed bid.
So moved.
Thank you, Council Smith, do we have a second?
Second.
We have second, Council Covielo's first. Any discussion on this? Yes, he's happy about that. Any discussion, Council Spear.
Is it each item over $500, right?
Well, we, these are all considered that they would be $500, so every one would be sealed bid.
Because I'm looking at vehicle three does not run, throttle linkage broken, rear suspension broken, batteries dead, I mean, at least, isn't that really over $500?
We have to estimate what it is. Well, if they give, if they give a bid of $200, we'll, we'll accept the bid.
Sounds fine.
But we want to make sure we comply with the, the ordinance.
Sounds like we may have a tinkerer down at that end of the council.
We have a bidder.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Okay.
Maybe he'll be bidding on it.
Well, there you are. Or through a straw, so there we are. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, it's unanimous. Item two.
Thank you, your honor. Next item is a request for a license from Michael Buckley, owner of the Surf Portsmouth RNC for property located at 99 Bow Street, to install a projecting sign. I'd recommend the city council move to accept the recommendation of Planning Director on the, with the aforementioned stipulations, and approve the request of Michael Buckley, owner of Surf Portsmouth RNC, to install a projecting sign on the new bracket at 99 Bow Street, and further authorize the city manager to execute a license agreement for this request.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed, unanimous. Item three.
Yes, thank you, your honor. The next item is, I was, after reviewing the minutes from the last city council meeting, I want, I'm proposing to have a work session before our regular meeting at 6 o'clock to just get a, to get some feedback from the city council on what types of things they want us to look at as relates to the Worth Garage before we go out to, to go for a proposal, to get, to have some more preliminary design. I know from the meeting and from reading the minutes, there was a lot of conversation, and I understand there was a request to have a work session, and I think this would be helpful to give the city staff some direction, because as we put the RFP together, for whomever we retain, I think it would be helpful to know what major issues the city councils might have and want us to look at.
Thank you. We have moved and seconded, do we have, I'm sorry, do we have a second?
Second.
Council Kennedy, Council Kennedy.
Um, I, I cannot make that date, it's our last day of school, so I will be late, I won't be able to make the 6 o'clock, and I'm planning to make 7, but I won't be there.
But if there are items that you want to add in or talk about, certainly, we, we can do that. It's really to try to get some direction.
And as far as that's concerned, if any other councillor, and certainly Council Kennedy, you're, you know, welcome to submit written questions or comments, I'm certainly also happy to speak with you or anyone, because I know, and offer that at the meeting, because I know there were a variety of opinions, and I want to make sure that they're all heard. So, you know, whatever we gotta do to make that happen, and I'm, and I'm, you know, we can be creative about how we do it, but we'll, we'll make sure that we try to accommodate you. Further discussion on this issue? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
That's all I have, your honor, just, just to show, on the informational areas, I've
areas, I've had events listening, and then there's an informational session tomorrow night here in the council chambers on SB 3. That was a request of the Legislative Subcommittee of the City Council to have Senator Bradley here, along with Senator Stouse, to talk about this legislation and give an update as to where it's at. Okay, we'll go to the mayor's portion of the agenda. We have appointments for consideration. Kristi Cardoso for reappointment to the Citywide Neighborhood Committee, and Kathleen Burs Siegel for reappointment to the Rec Board. We have appointments for voting. Thomas Heaney, reappointment to the Portsmouth Housing Authority. Jaclyn Kelly Pitts, reappointment to the Recreation Board. Elaine Syracuse, a reappointment to the Recreation Board. And Alyssa Hillstone, appointment as a regular member of the Conservation Commission. She currently serves as an alternate. Does anyone care?
So moved.
Thanks, Council Smith.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. It's unanimous. We also have a letter, which is the resignation of Sharon Morrison from the Citywide Neighborhood Steering Committee.
Except with regrets and a letter to thank her for service.
Okay, thank you. And do we have a second?
Second.
But I'll just briefly speak from the chair and say that she has long served the city on the Citywide Neighborhood Steering Committee. She's done a lot of work over the years in organizing both the holiday light contests, the Citizens Night Out, I mean, National Night Out. She really has worked hard for us, and we will miss her as she moves out of the city. So, here's hoping she decides to move back. But she is still in the area. So, all in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. It's unanimous. That's all I have. Council Kennedy.
First, I want to start by saying that I want to thank everyone that participated in the Sustainability Fair on Saturday, on that dreary cold day, or dreary cold day. There was a nice lot of, a lot of vendors. There was people that, from the education world of sustainability came out, and I really want to thank those people that sat out there all day and, on the cold day, for all their commitment to the sustainability world. So, thank you. What I'd like to do is, I just want to be prepared for Wednesday night, and I wanted to have a discussion, because we heard a lot from Portsmouth Listens about the manager's budget. The interesting thing, I came away with Portsmouth Listens, is that every group except for the students wanted, still wanted to keep 0%. And many of the groups had some questions about the city manager's budget. One in particular, things like phones and the phone rates. They're all in the, the printout. And so, I was hoping that in preparation for Wednesday night, that we could get some of that information and some of those answers.
Sure.
Because I think, what I hear from the community is people are focusing on the city manager's budget. We, they do feel there's some excess there, and no one seems, no one wants to lose the ambulance. No one wants to lose those services of Station 3. And it seems to be through the phones, information that's left for me, and there seems to be some feeling that there's some extras in the city manager's budget. So, maybe we can have clarification on that.
Again, I, I think, Your Honor, I'll speak to that Wednesday night.
Sure.
But just, just a perfect example of, of the whole study circles was that we were somewhat at a disadvantage, because the municipal budget was not presented or was not in place when we met with the study circles. The police and fire budgets were, and so, we did provide the entire budget to the study circles from last year. In talking and listening to the comments, I think there was a lot of misunderstanding as to some of those accounts. For example, the, the telephone account, that, that line item includes telephone lines for the fire department and the police department. So, we'll, we'll talk about that. General administration has many things in it. For example, the trustees of the trust, that's how they get paid out of that. So, we'll, we'll go through all that, and we'll explain it. Quite frankly, you know, we're talking about 30, one of the things that I find, and of course, and I talked to John Tabor and to Jim Nukas, one of the things that we found was that because you have police and fire that are specific to their missions, the very, you know, one mission that they're looking at, typically, in other communities, you would find that under what would be typically called the municipal budget. The municipal budget has probably 30 entities that not only support all kinds of services throughout the city, but support the police department and the fire department through finance, through other areas. So, you know, custodial services and those types of things. So, well, you know, I, quite frankly, I think next year, in talking to, to the organizers of Portsmouth Listens, it'd probably be better to push the date off until the full budget's available. And I'm also looking at how to make the budget a little bit more interactive and, and to expand on it. Obviously, we have a tremendous amount of information in there, and I think it is, you know, important to recognize that this was our first year working with them, and there are a lot of things within that budget that we can explain as to what, what the spending is for. You know, one thing I would just mention is, the municipal budget over the last 10 years has gone up less than any other of the cost centers in the city. So, I think it's important to recognize that, but we can be prepared to talk about those issues on Wednesday night.
And can I ask one-
Council Kennedy.
The other thing, could you also figure in your, in preparation, and that's what I'm trying to do, is give you preparation, and I'll spread this on to you on Wednesday night, is how we would absorb 1.8 million potential of what the state could turn down to us, and if, where would we absorb it?
Where would we absorb it?
You don't have to give me an answer.
I'm not going to give you an answer tonight, because that's really going to be an answer for the city council at that point. If, and again, if we had to absorb it, I have some ideas how we could deal with that issue, but I, I'll wait till Wednesday night.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion. And so, for Wednesday night, just bear in mind, traditionally, this has been one of, sometimes we've had, maybe we've had more than one, but typically at least one, or one, where we do talk about these issues. And there are other things that will come to mind. The department heads will be there. It requires us, it gives us an opportunity to inquire further, make sure we understand exactly what the impacts are and what it is we're doing, and they, they have an opportunity to respond as well. So, I do invite, I mean, it's usually a very productive session. And I do also remind you that there is a, that we're going to start a little early that evening, and ask you to bear that in mind as well. Does anyone have any further discussion this evening? Assistant Mayor.
I would like to report that the City Advisory Charter Committee has completed its business. Our last meeting was May 5. And first, I would like to thank our staff people, Kelly Barnaby and Bob Sullivan, for being at our meetings with us. Their input was absolutely incredible and valuable. You know, the, two of them had a lot of input into the original charter, excuse me, so to have them there was just wonderful. I also want to thank the members of our committee, Josh Shear, Tony Coviello, Peter Lachlan, and John O'Leary. You know, there are only five of us, so it was wonderful that everybody made every meeting, because it was important to have everyone there. Bob and Kelly are now drafting the final report, which we all saw a draft of today, and I think there are just a few minor adjustments to it. But the report will be ready, so I guess I would ask the mayor and the city manager to figure out when it can go on the agenda, so we can make our presentation and discuss the amendments. We came up with four amendments, a total of four amendments.
Well, I think that, you know, we want to make sure that, we, we may not want to put it on the same night that we, that we potentially vote on the budget, but I do think we want to have that before us as soon as we can, because we're going to have to consider what timely goes on a ballot. So, if we're looking at meetings, in terms of the report out, we'd do that at a regular meeting perhaps, or we could do it at a work session. But if we do it at a regular meeting, we're probably talking about June 20. And if, and I think that, asking the city clerk, that's well in advance of where we would need to be for any ballot questions to be drafted.
We would have to have the actual question authorized by the beginning, the end of August, beginning of September.
Okay, so we have some time, and that gives us opportunity. And so, we can put, put the ball in play on the 16th, get the report out, and then figure out where we want to go from there. Yes, Assistant Mayor.
I just have one comment, and the public speaker tonight mentioned the communication with the council, and it came up several times at our charter committee, where citizens would like to have some kind of a back-and-forth with the council, and should we have town meetings? Should we have some kind of session where there could be back-and-forth? And I don't know if that should be a future work session for us, or how we could possibly discuss increased embedded communication between the city council and the public.
Well, I think, let me just thank you, noting that at this point, within the scope of what we can do in this meeting, we know that we're going to schedule a meeting regarding these items that have come forward from the committee. We also know that there may be further items to be discussed by the council, and it will likely be the case that we would, would look at probably a work session after that at a point. We do have time. That's why we planned it this way. So, yeah, Council Coviello.
I'm not, maybe I was confused by what the system manager said, but what I was going to bring up tonight was that, in general, not about this item, the charter changes, is what I heard from Ms. McElwain, is the, the feedback idea. And I know I have presented ideas, you and I have talked, and others have mentioned it. I'm hoping that after we adopt the budget, we can have a council-wide discussion on, on a town meeting or some type of format where we can, because it's equally as frustrating for us to sit here and listen and wanting to jump in, as it is for the speakers out there. So, I know I'm going to try to offer up some ideas, but we'll wait till after the budget.
Yeah, we're going to have ample time to discuss that in the course of the summer, and, you know, I think that the two could conceivably work together. So, we have time. So, thank you for your thoughts. Further discussion? Council Spear.
Specifically, what she mentioned was the possibility of email. And I guess what I'd ask, if it's not too much for the city manager to report back at some point, the pros and cons of electronic communication, the public could go to the website and somehow say, "I want to..."
That's not, that's not a problem. It's just, the council says, "Tell me one." It's some council members don't want two emails.
And, right, I'm just looking for the-
This is the conversation we've had a couple times.
I've never, I've never had that conversation, so-
Well, we did have the conversation, I think, at the, at the retreat. But that's fine. I just need to understand, we can go ahead and implement city email addresses for city council members.
That might mean, that might not be the way to go. For example, right now on the website, you say, "Simply contact the webmaster," and it sends a form. And so, maybe that's a better method. So, there's different ways to skin the cat. That was just, and I'm just looking for ideas at this point. I'm not-
Sure.
All right. And the second issue is, and I need the city manager's help on this. I, I don't, has the, have the city council already, did Council Dwyer already report about the groundbreaking for the middle school?
Yes.
Which started giving that report out to the council? I know the school board heard about it, but if you guys have already heard about it, then-
Well, tell us again.
Okay, I'll tell you again.
June 6?
June 6, Monday morning at 8:00 a.m., and you're welcome to, the ground's already been broken, if you've seen it, but nevertheless, the formal groundbreaking would be at that time. And I think it's going to be really exciting. They're involved with students and the teachers, and at 8:00 a.m.
We did not have the time. We had the date.
Oh, now you have the time. 8:00 in the morning.
We'll get that in the city newsletter, and thank you for seeing-
It'll be a pretty big event, and it's a pretty exciting event for the city, and so I encourage you all to attend if you can.
Okay. At this time-
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed. Thank you, and good night.